Go ahead and start. I'm gonna ask Pastor Herr, will he give us our prayer? It's gonna be followed by Ms. Patricia Lane, our Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please stand?
Dear Heavenly Father, we love you today. We praise your name. We acknowledge that you own us all, that you own this city. And we are acknowledging that you are the Creator. And God, we just beg for wisdom for this body, for our mayor, for the city council. And I pray, Father, that you would build a righteous hedge of protection around our city, all for your honor and your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you call it, real please?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suta Jr. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Muhammad.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Wheaton.
Here.
We got eight other... No, we got nine out of ten present. We're gonna move forward. We had no bid opening on the agenda, so we're gonna go down to the minutes. Were there any corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve this minute.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? The minutes are approved. All in business, Mr. City Attorney.
This is the third reading of an ordinance to amend Article 5, uses and use conditions, Table 5.1, table of uses, Article 5, uses and conditions, Section 5.2, use conditions, UCT, Table 14, manufactured homes subdivisions and the area south of Wonder Junior High, zoning regulations and official zoning map adopted by ordinance number 2591, the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
We have here at that for this third reading. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Ms. City Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Ordinance number 2646, 2646.
That number is 2646. New business, Ms. Muhammad?
Yes, sir, thank you so much. I'd like for 01, 02, 03, 04, and 05 to be read by title only. I make that motion.
06.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Is added also, Ms. Muhammad, what you are add?
Yeah, if I may make a motion that we add 06 in the charity day funds distribution to the agenda.
Be read by title only.
I can say?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Is added to the agenda? City Attorney? Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, she did title.
06. This is an ordinance to amend Section 5 of ordinance number 1588, establishing the mosquito control department, providing funding and for other purposes.
Also, Councilman Crum, did you wanna make that amendment real quick in that title?
Yes, sir. I would like to amend the wording of the ordinance to take out department or word it where the mosquito control is not part of the city. It's a contractor, however you wanna word it.
Okay. Well, mosquito control contractor.
Yeah.
Yes.
May I get a second on that?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It has been amended. And City Attorney has read this for his first time. Well, we... It's gonna come back in two weeks. And everyone understand, these increases not... They're only gonna affect January 1st, so it's not today. 02?
02 is an ordinance to amend ordinance 2504 in Section 34-30 of the West Memphis Municipal Code to set garbage collection fees and for other purposes.
Is read for his first time, maybe back on the agenda in two weeks.
Mayor, if I may, I handed this out to everybody. This... I sent this out about two months ago. This is the fee structure for the front-end loaders that did not get incorporated into the ordinance, so we'll amend it. But I wanna first let everybody refresh and look at it again. Let me know in two weeks.
Of course, we're gonna put a lot of public information out there.
Yes, we're gonna do some things, the utility. And I can kinda give you a brief synopsis on the trash. We're gonna go to everything in War 1 on Mondays, everything War 2 on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, everything. 03, City Attorney?
03 is an ordinance to amend Section 10 of ordinance number 2472 to increase fees and add trades, businesses, professions, vocations, and/or callings for which a privileged license shall be payable and for other purposes.
Is also read for his first time, maybe back on the agenda in two weeks. 04?
04 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 710 East Broadway Avenue, permitting a convenience store in a DTMU-1 Downtown Mixed Use 1 District.
Can I get a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 710 East Broadway Avenue, permitting a convenience store in a DTMU-1 Downtown Mixed Use 1 District.
May I pause the suspended rules and place it on the third reading?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 710 East Broadway Avenue, permitting a convenience store in a DTMU-1 Downtown Mixed Use 1 District.
May I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you get 04 ordinance a number, please?
Order this number 2647, 2647.
That number is 2647. 05, City Attorney?
05 is an ordinance granting a lot split for the property located at 310 Mid-Continent Plaza, permitting an out parcel development.
May I get a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance granting a lot split for the property located at 310 Mid-Continent Plaza, permitting an out parcel development.
May I pause the suspended rules and place it on this third reading?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Third reading of an ordinance granting a lot split for the property located at 310 Mid-Continent Plaza, permitting an out parcel development.
May I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, it was an out parcel development.
What? Well, actually, what it is, is the Babalene, Babalene oil changing, new... There's a Babalene changing station that's coming on the Mid-Continent Lot. And they're gonna build a new complex right there on the Mid-Continent Lot.
On the lot itself?
Yes.
Close to where?
Toward the corner, right across from the Fidel de Bank, in the front. You know, Babalene is a...
I know what Babalene is, yeah, but I'm just... I'm trying to put in my mind exactly where the location.
I give you an example. You know how Kroger has the gas station right there in the front? It'd be the same like that, but it'd be on the Mid-Continent Lot.
On the Mid-Continent Lot.
Yes, ma'am. Any other? Any other discussion?
May want to make sure it's noted that...
Yeah, that's what I'm getting ready to do.
Mr. Katz.
Make notice that Mr. Katz would not be voting on this issue. Just let the record reflect that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Will you get that a number, please?
Order this number 2648, 2648.
That number is 2648. City Attorney, 04?
06.
06, I'm sorry, I don't know what I meant.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of net casino gaming receipts tax bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging the city's share of collections of the net casino gaming receipts tax levied under Amendment Number 100 to the Arkansas Constitution to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to pause, suspend the rules, and read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of net casino gaming receipts tax bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging the city's share of collections of the net casino gaming receipts tax levied under Amendment Number 100 to the Arkansas Constitution to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to suspend the rules and place it on the third and final reading, also reading by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is the third reading of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of net casino gaming receipts tax bonds for the purpose of financing all or a portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging the city's share of collections of the net casino gaming receipts tax levied under Amendment Number 100 to the Arkansas Constitution to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
I get a motion and a second to approve.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion from Attorney Bowman that we need to? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All... It passes. Will I... Can I get a motion?
If I may, ask for permission to use the emergency clause, paragraph 27. It's a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Will this approve with the emergency clause? Thank you.
Order this number 2649, 2649.
2649. We're gonna move down to committee reports. We'll start with the Fire Department.
Yes, the Fire Department met on October 17th. There were four new hires. One has already obtained their EMT, but they are in firefighter one and two training. The two others, two of the four, do not have any, so they'll go through the full one-year process. One firefighter had all the necessary training and was able to go straight to work. No retirements. Twelve sets of PPE will be ordered next week for next year. Vehicle maintenance, there was nothing. Building maintenance. The fire hydrant repair, there were actually 38. Twenty of these were simple repairs, and I think they'll be started next week. The remaining 18 actually need to be completely replaced with new systems. And admin will bring back a bid proposal package when they get that opportunity. EMS calls year-to-date, 3,547. EMS collections, 366,297.67. The Fire Department Administration met with the mayor on the 18th at 11 o'clock with their budget. The fire explorer program, Chief McNeil with the Memphis Fire Department will be here on the 18th at 130% program to the staff. I'm hoping the staff will go ahead and forward that to every council member so you can see how that program works and how it works with the youth. It appears to be a very good program. The promotional exam that was given by the department, seven of 31 passed the exam. Of those seven, one was captain, six were lieutenants. The second annual fire safety day was a huge success over the past weekend. The commercial fire on 7th Street, as of that day, was still undetermined as to the actual cause. And I'm gonna leave off this last section, so that'll be the mayor to take care of here shortly. And that concludes the Fire Department.
Utility?
Utility met on the 12th. The September safety report, I sent a copy of that to the city clerk so she can forward it to you without any problems. The economic development update, there are three projects that are running along well. One is a 600 acres there at the rail port. Probably will look at about 100 tech jobs. The other one is not as much information, but they're estimating around 800 jobs. The third project is in the port area. And it's my understanding, they're actually in negotiations with the landowner. So that is very promising. There are four other projects that are in early discussion. Too early to jump and get happy about those just yet. On the AMI update, there were 11,541 installations for the electric meters, so they're about 98% complete. Water installations are 2,201. They're averaging about 40 to 50 a day. The customer portal is forthcoming. You'll get more information on this where anybody can just go access their bill from their home and they'll get a lot of information if they're leaking water, it'll tell them. Vibrar update, the head has been installed. That building is storm rated. I think it weighs 34 tons. Building Commission, Building Committee had their initial meeting with the R-Tech. Main issue they wanted to deal with right now is water infiltration. Search Committee has narrowed it down to two candidates for a new general manager. The mayor, of course, will be making that final decision. Joel Johnson has transferred from the police department to fill the IT position with the utility department. And that concludes the report.
That concludes your report?
Yes.
AMP, I know that Councilman Monday gave one...
Okay, uh...
Councilman Monday?
Director, Jim Jackson.
Okay, Jim?
Police coming here, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
It could be personnel, I'm not really sure. As far as the parks, are we close to hiring someone so we can get back to our committees and...
Just hold one foot second, and you're gonna get it right now.
Yes, sir. Minutes, we just got those minutes yesterday, late afternoon. I think everyone has a copy of them. And these are the actual minutes. I'm gonna go over them just briefly for you. We met on October 11th. We did have a full house, a forum. Went over the financial report, our collections are up 12%. Working with Finance Director, we did add a line to our budget of capital improvements. We had a... We still have a special events line. And a lot of things were coming out of there, and it was a little confusing on what they are in a cap... in a special event. So we did add a cost center line to the budget. We... They authorized me to, with excess revenues, to collect or to purchase a $250,000 CD, contingent on it being 5%. And we were guaranteed we would get that. Events, uh... Mayor came and was asking and was approved for some incentive bonus for parks, hired new hires, based on, again, incentive. And reports would be required for these payments and incentive payments to be made. We had a funding request that was for the Sergeant Hoover Memorial 5K. We awarded $1,250 to that project. And you have all this in front of you. We are in the process of our second phase of ADA upgrades at the Civic Center. We had our first phase done, was the exterior. Had the second phase going on as we speak for the interior. And had that... That approved. I see a typo in this, too. The... That bid came in at 14,000... No, that's right, 14,698, Curtis Construction is doing that project. Also approved Christmas decorations that you guys approved and sent over to them for this year's Christmas at Worthington Park and at Martin Luther King Park and around town, $59,850. New business, we had to ask for a cash payout for our rhythm and ribs. And while I'm here, I wanna talk about rhythm and ribs. Did... Did you? Okay. We need some teams. We'd love to have more teams. We've got a nice event. And if you were there last year, you know. I know some of you were there, because some of you were one of the winners. You're not looking at me, are you, Mr. Monday?
Well, you know, one of my people think they really can cook.
Well, that's... I need some of that smack talk, okay? So we can get more people out there, because everybody says that they can cook them. Nobody wants to come and prove it. There are not many, so... But we're doing that October 28th. Everybody come out, we've got some good music. It'll smell good, it'll taste good. And that will be on a week from Saturday, on the 28th. We also engaged, voted to engage ETFC, the architectural firm, for a pretty extensive remodel of the Civic Center. We have projected numbers of $2 million for that project. We have some renderings already. They're gonna give us some little firm, more firm budget numbers, but we hope to put that out for bid and see if we can bring that thing in under $2 million. And hopefully, by this time next year, that Civic Center won't look like it does right now. That's the end of the report.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson? If I may?
Yes, sir.
Can I?
Go ahead.
In the... Underneath the incentive bonus at the top, you've got it lined out there, but then down here at the bottom, or that paragraph, Councilman Monday made an adjustment to the incentive bonuses. Does that supersede what's at the top?
I'm sorry, ask that again?
Look under...
It was $7,500 total?
Yeah. Does that supersede what's already at the top paragraph there?
Well, that would total 7,500, 5,02500.
Oh. Guess that makes sense, doesn't it?
Yes, sir. Well, I went to school, though.
Well, I went up the road.
Yes, sir, anything else?
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you, Monday.
Airport?
Uh, that's me, you didn't. Airport, let's see here. Garber Engineers reported that the notice of aware award has been sent to Chris Contractors for the North Apron Rehab Project, and they have 15 days to sign and return it. She also made the comment that Rebel Services, they're waiting to receive the parts for the tank. And once those parts are received, they will be submitted and an invoice for payment will be requested. She also says she is checking to see what her options are for clearing the trees on airport property north of Broadway and what grant funds might be available. That concludes the airport committee meeting.
Chamber?
The Chamber Committee met on October 11th to discuss 2024 events, programs, and services for the West Memphis community. Chamber Committees reported the high membership numbers, increasing business developments, and various events happening around the community. This past October 18th was National Support Your Local Chamber Day. Chambers of Commerce are our nation's strongest business advocates, providing a voice for thousands of communities across America. When businesses succeed, communities succeed. And that's a true statement. So that completes my West Memphis Chamber Report.
Thank you. Personnel?
Yes, sir. Personnel met on October 11th. I emailed each council as well as the Kirk's office, so you have that report on file. You'll have that... You have it in email. As well as you, mayor, you have it as well.
Counselors, you allow me just to move this up for a second. I want to address what Ms. Muhammad had asked. I said that this time, with the trust that the council has put into this administration, the trust that the voters has given us by approving our parks bonds, we see the works that's going on in High Tower Park currently. And what you all just passed today was another step to move forward, transforming Tilden Rogers to a totally great sports complex. Also, with Worthington Park and Franklin Park. There's some other things that we are doing to the parks. I felt that it was... It was under obligation to give you all, I feel, a dream team to be able to come in and run our parks, to bring individuals to our communities who have experience and proven records of bringing people to our community, people that can actually write grants, who's proving and writing grants, and a strong leader to make sure what needs to be done, to keep it up, maintaining, and to make sure that it's going forward. So at this time, I would like to introduce our dream team, starting with our parks director, our new parks director, Mr. Russell Jones. Our newest activities director that you all approved last time when we said Civic Center, Mr. Gary Cordell. And our parks administration, everyone knows Ms. Courtney Anthony. So this is our new team. And actually, they are housed inside of our former library. And if you go by and look at the building, it's a very good-looking building. A lot of work has been done to it, and I'm proud of it. And I'm gonna give Mr. Jones an opportunity. Do you wanna come and address, counsel say anything?
First of all, I'd like to say it's a blessing to be able to come back home. I've been gone for quite a while, working in different school districts in law enforcement for Corning County, but there's no place like home. I've been wanting to come back home. I thought I would be back in the capacity of assistant principal or principal. I remember speaking with the mayor one day in Walmart. I said, "Man, why won't they hire me back in West Memphis?" And no, he said, "Well, I don't know." He said, "We'll see one day if we can get you back home." So it's a blessing to be back to work for these citizens. I grew up in the progress of West Memphis. Proud, proud to be back at home. I have a passion for this job. I have a passion for the people, and I guarantee you, I will not make false promises. This is a dream team. We've been out doing analysis and just finding out what it is we need for the parks. That's what we've been doing for the past week. We're gonna continue to do the work for the people, and I appreciate you all for giving me a chance to do this job. Thank you.
I need to ask a question.
Sir? Yes, sir.
I'm very excited that you're here.
Yes, sir.
I am very partial to parks, because that's what makes up the city. And I do appreciate it, and I know you're gonna do a good job.
Thank you, sir.
When is our first meeting? When is our first meeting? I'm liaison as of right now, and you'll be dealing with me.
Well, whatever's worked, I think I dealt with you back in 1985.
You did?
Yeah, when I went to wonder.
I wasn't there in 1985.
Yeah, well, I was with you at one point when I was there.
No, I didn't start until after that. But your face looks familiar.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you related to somebody I know? Believe me, I'm just... I'm all bargain nobody, that's for sure. We'll get along one day, believe me.
Yeah, did you all wanna add? Ms. Cordell, Ms. Anthony, you all want?
Something that's been working on this week is we met with the college baseball coach about the school board. And we're going to Northeast Community College next Thursday to look at their school board. We've got a video screen on it. And we're looking at ways to, we can go out and find a corporate sponsor, I'm working on prices right now, how much it costs. And then from there, we're going to do like a four or five-year project, or not a project, but a contract with the corporate sponsors. And they'll pay so much a year, and we find out, and then we can sell advertising on it. And soon as we get business cards made, we're going to hit the road. I'm going to go all the way down Broadway, up one side, down the other, Missouri Strip, and sell advertising signs. Excuse me. And try to put a, a sign on every ball field we have, and fill our fences up. And use that money to use to buy equipment we need to, you know, do with the parks. Russ and myself went over yesterday and looked at some containers that we're going to put in the parks, to put restrooms in it and concession stands. That way there'll be a lot more secure than what we have now. Because the double doors, we're going to leave the double doors on one end, that'd be the concession stand. We pull them back together, you put a lock on, you can't, the lady guarantees, you can't break into them. And then they're going to cut the hoes for windows for the bathrooms. And I'm getting prices for mini splits, do heat and air in, in the restrooms. And they'll cut the windows and everything. So as soon as we get all that stuff, we're going to go out and find sponsors for that, and try to find like one of the car dealerships on like, for the West Memphis, do the twenty-fifth park. You know, we don't have a bathroom out there, we're going to put one there, it's already a slab there. We went, I was surprised Russell had never seen Grizzly Park there on Balfour. And we was out there, what, about two hours a day?
Two hours.
Just walking around and coming up with ideas what we want to do, so. And soon as we get the ball fields ready, we're meeting with Lad in the morning, the architect, about doing the upgrade on the ball fields. Try to get a deadline when that's going to be, so I can start bringing tournaments in town. So that's what we got going right now.
Thank you so much. Did you notice what excited me about what he said? He said, "You all want to have to pay for it, you want to come now my budget, find a sponsor," so that's what we need, so. I just want to commend this team. Was there any other committees that? I think, did she, did you want to come?
I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to work for the city of West Memphis, and especially the parks. And I am so excited about working with these two gentlemen, we've been on the road all week. And evaluating the parks, and seeing what we need for our parks. And not only that, we've been making, well, making notes as to our plans for redeveloping the parks, and that we would like to bring to you all. So once again, I thank you for the opportunity, especially to work for the city and with the dream team. Thank you again.
Thank you, all. I'm so excited, because like I said, when they bring in tournaments, people are staying here, people are buying food here. That's outside income, but not only just outside income, just improving the quality of life for the people that actually live here in West Memphis. So that's going to be big for us, and I look forward to them doing this job. We didn't have any other committees that reported. I had no appointments, I have two presentations.
You want to take care of the charity days?
Yeah. I got a motion second to add to charity days.
You already have.
Second. Yeah, we already did, we already did. Actually, I want to give a thousand dollars to Faith International Church, and three hundred to the L.R. Jackson Girls Club. Did anyone else want to use any of the charity days, or three hundred? Can I get a motion in second?
Come on.
All of them, yeah? Oppose? It passes. All right. Now, I had no appointments, I got two presentations. Well, definitely the Fire Department is going to be first, and then Councilman Bruce, did you want to go first, or?
Doesn't matter.
Well, let Councilman Bruce go first, since you all are a little more in detail.
Okay, Mayor, basically, this is, these are certificates from your support, the support for Creative Strategies First Annual Prostate Council Awareness Run Walk. And I have, I guess I can ask you to come up as I call your name. I have first, Councilman Lorraine Muhammad with the certificate.
The walkie?
Well, for, for, basically, I think you, you've supported us in other ways as well. So this is a certificate to you.
Wow, thank you.
Okay. And this certificate reads, Certificate of Appreciation and Grateful Recognition of Your Support for Creative Strategies. First Annual Prostate Council Awareness Run Walk. We hereby present Councilman Lorraine Muhammad with this certificate of appreciation.
Thank you so very much. And I would like to say that, that I came in third, third from the last one.
I also have a certificate of appreciation that reads saying, for Councilmember, Councilmember Melanie Hutchinson.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate you so much. Well, I'm going to get a, we get a picture. Okay. I also have a certificate for Mayor Marco McClennan.
And I finished first, in my A's degree.
Councilman Wayne Crew, have a certificate for you as well. Thank you, yes, sir. Also, we have a certificate for the city of West Memphis. So Mayor.
I'll take this one. Is Kenneth out there?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to accept this on the city?
Okay. Do we have anyone here from the West Memphis Police Department? They would like to ask you to come and accept this certificate. Chief from the Fire Department.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And basically, I'd like to just say thank you to, to all of you all, because without your support, we couldn't have gotten it done. We rallied the Police Department, rallied the Fire Department. And we'd just like to say thank you for all of your support and everything that you did for us during this time.
Chief Ealy, the Fire Department?
Good evening. As you all know, on the morning of September the thirtieth, the West Memphis Fire Department had one of the largest commercial structure fires in the history of our city. The West Memphis Fire Department would like to recognize three of our leaders for outstanding job performance on that day. I think so often, we take for granted the sacrifices our men and women make every day, just to help keep us safe. We owe them a debt of gratitude. Let's just take a moment and give them a round of applause. I am convinced, great leaders are not picked, they emerge, from the background to the forefront, from obscurity to notoriety. President John Quincy Adams said, and I quote, "If you inspire others to dream more, to become more, and to do more, you are a leader." These three leaders of the West Memphis Fire Department that we are recognizing today are the epitome of that. At this time, will Captain Allen Worth report to the stage? Captain Allenworth. Your actions to remove firefighters from imminent danger while attempting to save property reflect the performance we expect from the West Memphis Fire Department Company Officer, and you have been recognized as commendable by myself, my command staff, and Mayor Marco McClennan. Great job, Captain Allenworth. Would you like to say a few words, Captain?
Like y'all.
Battalion Chief Kevin Cat. Battalion Chief. Your organized approach and command presence at the scene reflected the level of leadership we expect from West Memphis Fire Department Battalion Chiefs. The work you have done with the men and women of your shift to train for large fires paid off and has been recognized as commendable by myself, my command staff, and Mayor Marco McClennan. Good job, Battalion Chief Kevin Cat. Would you like to say a few words, Chief?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Fire Chief Ealy, City Council. A lot of people to thank for that day. First, I'd like to thank my wife and my family for being here and supporting me no matter what. And I would like to thank my firefighters that worked for hours and days on that fire. Twenty-four hour days, two-hour shifts, it was, it was a long shift, for sure. Not only that, I would like to thank all the off-duty personnel that came and worked sometimes ten, eleven, twelve hours straight. And, and Chief Willis from the Marion Fire Department. They came without question and supported us and helped us fight this together. It was a truly team effort, for sure. Thank you.
Good job, Battalion Chief Kevin Cat. Division Chief Robert May, would you step forward, please? Division Chief Robert May. You have led revisions to our department's standard operating procedures, SOPs, and standard operating guidelines, SOGs, and trained for large fires using big fires, big water mindset of a large handline master stream and aerial letter streams. These changes were reflected at this fire. With the performance of our personnel being what the community expects from the West Memphis Fire Department, the work you have done with the men and women of our department has been deemed recommendable by the chief, I, Barry Ealy, my command staff, and Mayor Marco McClennan. Good job, Division Chief Robert May. Would you like to say a few words, Chief May?
Who's got my cutoff button? So I, I accept this by proxy. Those on shift, stand up, please. So C-shift, of course, put in a huge amount of work on this fire, as did the other two shifts over the next five or six days. Thank you all.
Chief.
Chief Cat's shift also fought a commercial fire in January this year. I know this was a, a loss to our city's last one. I want you to know that in the first two weeks of the year, your Fire Department saved about four and a half million dollars of commercial property. Four million alone on Chief Cat's shift at the Days Inn Fire over by Southland. And on A-shift, Chief Stokes's shift on East Broadway at the Budget Inn Hotel. That was just in the first two weeks of the year. These men do very well, they go out, they put their lives on the line for real. Captain Allenworth cannot say what he came out of. It looked like the pits of hell where he came out of in the back of that building when I pulled around. He pulled his men out, saved probably three or four of them, because that roof collapsed within the next five or six minutes after they came out. But, you know, we all swear to protect two things in this city, life and property. And they put law on the line for the, for, so thank you all, thank you, Chief.
Excuse the chief. Chief, chief. Great job. Chief May.
Chief, can you have those young men come up as well, so we can all?
Yes, at the end, we'll take a group picture.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
In closing, I have received several letters and emails from the citizens and city leaders about the great job the West Memphis firefighters are doing. I would like to share a few of those letters with them to let them know what the city leaders and the citizens are saying about them. Chief, what an outstanding achievement. The West Memphis Fire Department and the city of West Memphis celebrated today the Easton Lane Training Facility. The men and women of the West Memphis Fire Department are so fortunate to have a mayor in administration that is pushing hard daily for their well-being. I am excited to see the future growth of the Fire Department and slightly jealous that when we did, that we did not have a training center when I was on the line. Congratulations again, Former Assistant Chief, Emergency Management Director, Dwayne Rose. Hey, Chief. Just want to tell you how proud I was to see the West Memphis Fire Department look like the department it used to be. You have put together one hella group of men to rebuild what was left in pieces. I never thought I would see it returned to the greatness I remember it as, but I saw it firsthand yesterday. If there's anything that we can do to help you, be assistance to you in the coming days, as I know everything, and everyone is worn out, completely down, please don't hesitate to call or text. I will always feel part of the family and be there for anything that the family need. Get some rest, take care. Former firefighter, city business owner, Hudson Hallam. Thank you. You and the West Memphis firefighters represented today. You all made our city proud. Mayor Marco McClennan, thank you. Mayor, would you like to have some closing remarks?
Sure, I just publicly want to say, I want to commend the men and women of this Fire Department. Chief, you have done an amazing job in showing leadership.
Thank you.
But I just want to say one thing, that you all may not know, this fire that we hit on Seven Street, our men and women attempted to go into the facility when it first begun. And they was willing, once again, at that time, to risk their own life, not knowing was anyone in there, but they were placing their lives on the line to go into that building. By the grace of God, I think they got the information from the, the co-owners across the street, and they verified that no one was inside, but guess what, how bad that fire was? These men and women was willing to go into that fire to save whomever someone they possibly have never met before. So I commend them for that. So I commend them for that.
Mayor, can I say something else? Someone that I don't see, very, very quiet. Very quiet, but very knowledgeable. And that's Assistant Fire Chief Derrick. And I don't see him here, but he, he is, he's a super guy. And I think that needs to be said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, I knew you all thought we was almost over. We got a little bit more to go. But I think it's good news, though, honestly. I have a few announcements that I need to make. First of all, once again, I know many of you have heard the news and heard it on the news that, once again, West Memphis is truly on its winning streak. Family Dollar Distribution is on its way back to the city of West Memphis. It's going to be a model of excellence for our community and the things that they are getting ready to do and want to work with us and make sure they bring in new managers from top to bottom, working from the ceiling to the, to the floor as well from wall to wall. And we're competitive wage if you're looking forward to getting them back. Three hundred and fifty jobs starting off, ramped up to six hundred new jobs to our community. So that's a great job for them. I just want to address something on our ten mile bio. You know, some people say on social media, they kind of got it. And I think I kind of placed a cover over it, but we did find a body out there. And it was not a child. And many people relating that to the West Memphis tree. And I thought that was so mean. But definitely, it was not a child that was found in that bio. And I think they sent the body out to the Crown Lab in Little Rock. So definitely, they're going to give us any information that we need. I think they are going to rule out any foul play. So I just want the people, sometimes, you can say what you want to say on Facebook, but sometimes you can be real mean and saying some things. Because when you lose a child, it can be twenty years from now. That child, that, that still burns within that parent. So I just ask everyone to be aware and be cautious of what they say, you know, some things. If you don't have the proper information and you don't know for sure, just kind of be quiet and just offer your prayers. Also, our beloved crossin' guard, Ms. Doris Jordan. Many of you all knew her. She worked right there at North Fourteenth Street and Barn. She passed over the weekend. And my prayers just going out to her family. Definitely be at a wake this Friday night. But just want you all to continue to pray for the Jordan family as one of our beloved. I think she told me at our last meeting, she spent twenty-two years. Twenty-two years of a long time. Just making sure that our babies get back and forth across the street safely. So just give a prayer for the Jordan family. As well as, we lost someone that has been with us over thirty-three years today. And I guess this, this not a bad going away. I mean, after thirty-three years, I think he deserved it. Mr. Mike Morrison at the Utility Department. He retired today. I've just spent over thirty-three years at our West Memphis Utility Department. So I just want to commend him. As well as, this is Breast Council Month here in October. I just want everyone to, especially all women, to go get their mammograms. As well as make sure they, their stream checked themselves. Early detection is always going to be the best thing toward prevention and keeping themselves safe. But not only just breast cancer, but prostate cancer, colon cancer, whatever cancer, please just make sure you get yourself streamed so you can be safe and you know what's going on within your body. And early detection is always going to be the best defense against defending you from any type of cancer that you may be dealing with.
Resolution that has to be done for Cadence. And I didn't get the information until just before the meeting, so.
All right. Back to my announcement, I want to get some updates on roads and bridges. Now, let me, let me, let me do this. You know, it, it just seems like when it comes down to any type of construction in West Memphis, I'm going to, I'm going to take the beating regardless. I mean, it can be because of the cloud that show up today. I'm going to be responsible for that as well. But I remember when many people were reaching out to myself and, and Council McCroom, I think you gathered too for Broadway in Missouri. Everyone asking, when Broadway in Missouri is going to get done? Now, the state has started on that process and now I'm still getting beaten up because I guess they're not doing it as quick as we thought they should do it. It's always going to be a process. And what they, they done, they sent us over a little over a week ago, probably almost two weeks now, that they are waiting on the sensor strips that goes in by the lights. That's why you see you go down some mountain and be smooth and then you, even lanes come in. It's because they went on the sensor strips to be put in and then they will overlay them. So I'm just going to ask for the people of West Memphis, be a little patient. I mean, it's not the city of West Memphis. Once again, that's R-DOT. It's not the city again, let me repeat again, it's R-DOT. So R-DOT is doing that project. And honestly, in another month or so, we are, hopefully, we can put down the problems that we have went through to get to this point. But definitely, R-DOT is doing a great job. And we just been a little patient with them. And we, right now, at this point, we ain't got no other choice. It's Highway seventy, seventy-nine. So I mean, what, what you going to do? You have to be patient with them for they can get the job done. And just give them the time that they need so we can get our streets done. And I think there's going to be something big to help Broadway like it's done all the way from Missouri down to the, to the bridge, as well as all of Missouri. So give them an opportunity and hopefully, and hopefully, I pray in another thirty days that the street issue is be taken care of. Now, I think, now, I don't want y'all to jump over when I say this, but Rich Road Bridge is not at 100% complete. Yeah, can I get the claim, the call? Rich Road Bridge is at 100% complete. Now, within thirty days, in thirty days, they're going to have to send it out for the bids, you know. So they still got to get bids now. So, function breaks a little bit now, but the process is moving forward. So we just waiting them, once they get their bid processed, and I'm sure they process is similar to how we have to do some bids. And then hopefully, we get the contractor out there to start working on the bridge. And I guess the only way to get, the only way to get to Walmart, that would be fixed. So we won't have to worry about that, no. All right. Second, guess yesterday morning, I had an opportunity to go meet with R-DOT again, and we met on Little Street Bridge. Little Street Bridge is eighty, eighty percent complete for its construction. They're going to do three box covers. I don't understand why they can't do that on Rich Road. I'm just going to let Rich Road go, since it's where it's at. But they're going to do three box covers. It won't be no bridge closure. Only, the only time you can expect the bridge closure is when they actually taking the bridge out to start to lay the covers in. But besides that, there will not be any closure. So you ain't got to worry about the Little Street Bridge closing. They projecting to start on that. They in the summer, middle of summer, somewhere during that time. And they said that process is not going to take long at all. Actually, I have the plans right here in my hand. What it's going to be, they're going to do sidewalks, a grass barrier, as well as a, a bridge with both sides. So it's going to look like this. I know it's hard to see, but they far ahead on this plan than Rich Road Bridge, once again, one done. But Little Street Bridge is getting ready to be completed. I asked about Red Street. I know Council McCroom going to ask me about Red Street. But right now, Red Street is right now on hold. But I said that if we doing bridges, what else are you all going to do? So I've talked to him today. Well, I talked to him that day, but I did talk with him today about our walkover West Memphis. And the reason why that is so important because we have new schools. First of all, Wonder Junior High. When you walking from Wonder Junior High down Pope Street, them kids are walking in the street. And I don't know if you have seen, but on Twenty-Fifth Street, we have put down a sidewalk on the Twenty-Fifth side. But we getting ready to walk over West Memphis. They're going to redo the street on Pope Street from Twenty-Fifth to Twenty, Twenty-Fifth to Twenty-first Street. And they're going to add sidewalks. As well as they're going to do some trails within our bios to make those more clean where kids can walk through them, but not from that school. There's other schools around. As well as West Junior High, where they just put those new schools at and in the area, so they're going to do right there. And right now, they were just waiting on a cultural, environmental study. And once they get that done, we can look forward to moving forward to help those streets there. And it's for the safety of our babies. So we want to make sure that our babies are taken care of and safe, walking back and forth to school. One thing I didn't ask and I need to ask, I need you all, I want to make a motion in second, or ask for a motion in second to place a police vehicle on the agenda vehicle so we can vote on it.
Is this for the Durango?
Yes, the Durango.
Yes, sir, I'll make the motion.
On paper, opposed? What this is, is it's not, it's a, it's a seven Durango that's being bought, but it's not being bought from the city budget. It's being bought from the seizure funds. And I do apologize that it didn't get through the Police Commission like that's the proper way that it's going. But as we got one left on the, on the floor, where we just bought the six additions that you all. And I would like that we get that because once again, it's not coming out the budget. It's coming out of Police Seizure Fund. So I get a motion in second to approve that?
You have?
Yeah. On paper, opposed? It passes. Chief, thanks. We know about the Rhythm and Riff that's coming up next weekend. We want everyone to be a part of it. But something I do want to announce is our home bar seminar that our planning department is doing. We want people, for so long, on social media, we get so many calls about affordable houses and different things like that. Maybe the developers today, they're getting ready to want to build some bigger houses, but it's more on the, that property that we once talked about over there off of College Boulevard. We're definitely new housing going over off Twenty-Fifth Street. And some of those are affordable houses. But even though the house is coming, people have to be able to afford them. And we got F-O coming in. I think they doing equipment around this moment. Twenty-five, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars up to closing and down payment assistance, credit scores or 580. We going to be doing credit monitoring and counseling to make sure people credit is straight. Talking to lenders and real estate agents and all, the whole nine yards. Just make sure everyone get the whole complete picture. Because some people are paying $1,200 rent. That's the same amount as a house note. And you have no equity where you rent there, but you have a lot of equity where you buying it. So I just want everyone to take advantage of that. And this next Saturday, on the 28th, it's from nine to 12. We want people to come here, it's right here at City Hall. We definitely want them to get involved and, and be here so they can get that necessary training for renters can become homeowners. And we know what it is. We know that when a person is buying their home, they take more pride in their home than a person just renting. And right now, we got fifty-seven percent of people in West Memphis are renting and forty-three percent are on. And I want to flip that around to make sure we got more homeowners in our city. So please take advantage of that. Then after that, you can come on over there, you can use some free barbecue at the Rhythm and Riff. So just everyone take advantage of that and take, and look at everything that we doing. We, we are truly, as a council body and an administration, doing things that can help to change people's lives. We're bringing their jobs, six hundred, almost six hundred jobs. Getting ready to go, unless you ain't got a job, you can get that. We working with the college right now and doing some GED programs where they can come in and make sure people have their education equivalent to be able to get these jobs. We got a safer city, some things are happening, but we a whole lot more safer than where we around. As well as buying homes, becoming homeowners, and not just being a renter. So take advantage of what we doing. We doing everything that we can to help to make you be a better person, better citizen, better contributor to this community. So, do I got anything else? Well, that's all I have. So, any council person have anything they want to add?
I would like to say something really, really quickly. I know I've been really playing and trying to be very jovial today, but I, I would like to say that my heart is extremely heavy. And I'm trying my very, very best in front of my children, my coworkers, and everybody to maintain my composure. And I do consider myself a very serious lady. My husband is a Palestinian. And he went to Jordan and on to visit in Palestine his family. Three days after landing, landing in Jordan, then the war broke out. I don't know exactly when he's coming home. They had closed the borders in Palestine. He couldn't get over to see his mom, dad, his brothers and sisters. They finally opened the borders. And when he said he was going over, of course, I couldn't sleep at all. But thankfully, he made it to Palestine safely. And I just really want you all to pray for that situation in the Middle East. I, I watch news that doesn't come on our regular channels. I see a lot of, he send me a lot of gruesome pictures of things that are actually going on. It's just really, really horrible. Pray for Israel, pray for Palestine, pray for Gaza City. It's just really bad. Pray that this terrible, terrible war will end. And most of all, pray that God will bring my husband back home.
Ms. Mohammed, we definitely be praying for you. Ms. Hutchinson?
Also, I would ask that the entire community keep Mrs. Menace, the teacher. Everyone knows she's been with us for years. She had, she lost her daughter. A very unfortunate situation. So keep the Menace family. There's so much death people are dealing with every day. People are dealing with issues, but the sudden and the tragic ones, it is, it's a lot to deal with. So keep that family in your prayers. And I wanted, I asked Mayor McClennan.
I'm going to do it now.
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect. So cool. Thank you, sir. Keep that family in your prayers. Thank you.
And last, we have a fifteen annual Clippers Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. It will be held this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. It's going, the walk is going to start at 6:20 West Broadway. And we want everyone that want to get out just to help bring awareness, once again, to breast cancer. I know it's Courtney Chat who's doing it, but his sister was a survivor of breast cancer. So definitely, we want to spread the word and anyone that's available to get out there at 10:00 a.m. and walk and just show awareness. And for anyone that may have lost their battle or someone who has beat it or someone just want to make it, make, bring awareness to all women. So definitely just show your support. We're helping them do that. Any other council people have anything? I hear no more announcement, but I have one citizen request. Ms. Marie Brewer-Pain Smith. Will you come forward, please? And we normally give five minutes. Give your name and your address, please.
My name is Marie Brewer-Pain Smith. And you said my address? Two oh seven Kingsway Drive, West Memphis, Arkansas. Again, my name is Marie Brewer-Pain Smith. I'm a registered nurse. I achieved my degree from Oakwood University in Huntsville, Alabama. Some of you might know me as the sister of Chief Dennis Brewer. Some of you might know me as the wife of the former Jimmy Smith, who was the owner of the Auto Connection. And some of you are probably still wondering, who is she? I would like to take just a few minutes to tell you how I got here at this time, standing before the mayor and his council. Council, I'm sorry. Approximately two weeks ago, I entered the door of the City Hall. I was concerned about ordinances that might interfere with the project that we are trying to establish here in the West Memphis area. The gentleman in the front entrance directed me to the office of Patricia Lane. I entered Ms. Lane's office. I entered Ms. Lane's office, introduced myself, handed her a printout indicating why I was in her office. At first, she was very cheerful. Cheerful consideration, speaking sincerely At first, she was very cheerful, cheerful consideration, speaking sincerely without an amused facial expression. In other words, she didn't wear a smile. As I continued to talk with her, she said to me, "We don't encourage such activities, but we cannot tell you not to do it." As I continued to speak with her, she said to me, "You might have to speak with our city attorney." I said to her, "Could you give me his name and number?" She grabbed a pen and a pad and began to write down his name and number. As she was writing, I said to her, "Do you know Dennis Brewer?" She lifted her face and looked me in the eye and said, "Yes." And I saw an amused facial expression. A smile came to her face. She began to use adjectives that I knew fit my brother very well. She dropped the pen and paper, and she said to me, "Let me check and see if the mayor is here. I would like to introduce you to him with your program." I said, "The mayor knows me, I've met him before, but he probably knows me as the sister to Dennis Brewer." So, she said to me, "Your program is very good. The mayor invited approximately forty ministers from this area to discuss some of the same issues that you have in your program." She said to me, "Let me give you the name of a few councilmen or individuals whom you might be able to reach out to." She gave me Mr. Monday, Mrs. Harris, and Mr. Murray. I called Mr. Monday. He was short, and he said, "Why don't you call the mayor's secretary, have her to put you on the agenda, and you discuss with all of us your concern?" That's how I got here today. As a concerned citizen and a nurse of the city of West Memphis, I must, I must tell you, I am very concerned about crimes that involve murder, drive-by shooting, and domestic violence. It has taken toll on our city. And if you be honest with yourself, it has taken a toll on us as individuals. I find it very devastating when innocent victims, babies, toddlers, are succumbed to such profound immorality, wickedness, and gutless actions. It's hard for me to imagine the pain, mental agonies, family members experience due to the loss of a loved one. As a nurse with great love and concern for humanity and my community, a group of us feel it very necessary and feel that we are responsible to assist in an attempt in revolving or resolving such issues. We've come together to establish a well-needed family-like youth ministry center. The center will provide safety, comfort, and healing for families, children suffering from abuse and abandonment, and we, and we will endeavor to teach love, trust, and instill self-respect. In so doing, we will help parents and children trapped in hopelessness and despair to become compassionate and grateful citizens of this West Memphis community. So, now you're probably saying, "Well, what does that have to do with us?" I'm at that point. I'm asking you if you would permit us to solicit in the city of West Memphis and be reminded that as we solicit, we give back to the city. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do, may I say this, Mayor, I do have a few handouts that I would like to pass out. And one of the projects that we've started is doing homemade soap. Everybody that help us get soap. But it will all, we will also sell the soap as one of our avenues to raise money.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, it's our council meeting. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
So, move it.
On paper?
Aye.
Oppose?